Today is Monday, November 4th, 2019. We're here for the purpose of the Committee of the Whole. It is 8:23. Do we do the pledge again, too?
No, we don't do the pledge. Typically, we have not.
Okay. It's on my agenda. We're going to jump over the pledge. I already did it once. Clerk Malone, please call a roll.
Leader?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Palomsky?
Here.
York?
Here.
Saludo?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Levin?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Conquest absent. Brennan?
Here.
Molner?
Here.
Joyder?
Here.
Sabatino?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. On to Agenda Item 2, announcements. Any announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public comments. It's an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council should they so wish. Same rules apply from our last meeting. If anybody in the audience has any public comment, please raise your hand so I can get it counted. Howard? There you go.
There's my hand.
Okay. On to business for the committee. Introduction and begin review of the fiscal year 2020 budget. Before I turn it over to the city manager, I just want to remind council how we've done some things in the past and would like to do things in the future, but certainly open to suggestion. We'll be holding these committees as a whole after our council meetings from now until the end of the year, if necessary. We are required to pass a budget. Certainly, council's encouraged to ask any questions they might have. If we get stuck on something or staff can't immediately answer, or I feel the meeting's getting bogged down, I will ask it to be put on the circle back list, which is a list of items that we dig into a little bit deeper, and staff does their best to provide us with information on the circle back in successive meetings. But that does not mean that any of the council cannot review all 4,000 lines of the budget at any time, and certainly contact staff individually during the week if you have specific comments. I know that some aldermen have already done that. Other than that, I'd like to stick to no later than 10 o'clock for these meetings, which means we have an hour and 34 minutes for this one. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to present to the council the proposed 2020 fiscal year budget. I'm not going to go through how the budget's organized. I think everybody understands how that is, and just jump right into comments. So, our past fiscal year saw continued progress on our strategic planning goals, including those goals, our fiscal reviews, technology upgrades, stormwater control, and economic development efforts. Staff has utilized this direction generated in the plan to design department goals and related budget requests for 2020. During the past year, an additional $4 million of CMAC funding was secured for the train station project, which is slated for construction in 2021. A new train station and other facility improvements will provide added value to the growing central business district area. It furthers our strategic plan goals of increased economic development. Regarding our goal of fiscal reviews and alternative revenues, budget takes into account a fund balance currently above our policy goal of 25% to 33% of general fund expenditures. Previous budget utilized some funds to help control the property tax levy by transferring funds above our threshold into the general fund revenue account. We are once again proposing this for the fiscal year 2020 budget. We remain prudent as we bring the fund balance within our policy of 25% to 33% of the general fund balance, and the chart on Page 2 of my letter shows the forecast of fund balance into 2020 and projected for 2021. Capital project planning continues, as I outlined earlier, with the presentation of the capital expenditure budget. Funding these improvements remains a concern. However, the Finance Committee has started discussing revenue priorities and sources to that end. Proposed revenues for the City of Elmhurst for fiscal year 2020 total $146,732,600. As indicated in the chart on Page 9, the largest revenue sources are sales, property, and utility taxes comprising $51,525,000, or 35% of our total revenues, an increase of roughly $3 million from 2019. Property taxes account for $2.4 million of the increase due to increased pension costs and the addition of bond issued debt service payment. In the general fund, which is our major operating fund of the city, the proposed budget expenditures are $72,592,600 for the 2020 fiscal year. Proposed revenues in the general fund are $68,362,000 for fiscal year 2020, which requires the use of fund balance of over $4 million for projected general fund balance at the end of FY 2020 of roughly $12.6 million. This balance falls within the city's fund balance goal of 25% to 33% of the operating expenditures. Regarding sales tax, and our municipal 1% sales tax estimate is almost $13.4 million and projected to increase at the rate of 3% compared to the prior year. Reminder, this is our greatest single source of revenue in the city's general fund, and I think it really speaks to our economic development efforts. In addition to the municipal 1% sales tax, the city levies a 1% home rule sales tax, which funds stormwater and other capital projects, as well as general fund operations. It's projected that will increase to $7.5 million before rebates. Regarding our prepared food and beverage tax, which is a 1% tax, this is projected to increase 3% over prior estimates to $1.4 million. Moving on to property taxes, the 2019 levy, which is to be collected in the summer of 2020 and is still under consideration at the Finance Committee, is budgeted as an increase of 4.9% in the general fund portion of the tax levy. The proposed levy includes the continued abatement of the current debt service obligations on all current outstanding debt. However, the additional debt to be issued in 2019 and necessary for stormwater projects is scheduled to be paid with an unabated line item on the property tax bill. The council has until March of 2020 to abate this and choose an alternative revenue source to pay the debt. Finally, the city, as a matter of policy, also levies for its contribution to the city's pension funds. Based on the recommended contribution amounts from the actuarial valuation reports dated January 1st of 2019, significant increases are planned for the fire pension of 18.4% and police pension, 18.2% levies. The increases are mostly due to the investment returns for 2018 falling short of expectations and the change in the investment rate of return assumption from 7.0% to 6.75%. In addition to that, the state is proposing legislation to combine all the funds into two funds, one for police, one for fire, to help gain investment returns for all of the funds. We'll see how that plays out. There's legislation that is put forth in the veto session that's going to be under consideration, so we'll keep the council apprised on that as that moves forward. Couple other significant revenue sources I want to highlight, the motor fuel sales tax, and this is the state tax, not our 1.5% tax. Funds received from the state solely from MFT are restricted by state statute for uses related to roads. The city share of MFT is projected to increase significantly in 2020 due to the approved legislation earlier this year increasing the state's MFT tax by 19 cents per gallon on gasoline and 24 cents per gallon on diesel fuel. The additional funds are to be deposited into a newly formed transportation renewal fund, where a portion of the additional revenue will be shared with the units of local government. As a result, the fiscal year 2019 estimated revenues reflect a 24% increase over fiscal year 18, and fiscal year 20 revenues are expected to increase an additional 24% to a projected $1.7 million, reflecting a full year of distribution from the fund. Overall, the equalized assessed value in Elmhurst increased 7% for the 2018 levy, and is projected to increase 5.6% for the 2019 levy. Looking at the real estate market, talking to real estate professionals in the community, home sales have slowed a little bit, but Elmhurst is above average in home sales and price, which is good for the city. Additional new EAV from both residential and commercial building in the city positively impacts the community as those new residents and businesses share in the community costs. In 2018, construction added 339 residential units, as well as various business buildouts that will add an estimated EAV of $58 million for the city. Major residential construction in the works include the Lennar Project, condominiums at 105 Cottage Hill, Elm Creek Townhomes, and the Elmhurst 195 condos, which should all come online in 2020. This fiscal plan continues to follow the results of the 2018 strategic plan update and emphasizes stormwater relief through a number of projects and policies, economic development to continue Elmhurst growth, and sustains the city's strong financial position. We believe it's a sound fiscal plan for the City of Elmhurst for the next fiscal year, and I would request the council's positive consideration. Before that, I would like to also thank the Finance Department, Tom Truzine and his staff, along with all the department directors for their input and cooperation during the budget process. Tonight, we have a schedule laid out that was included with the agenda, and what we'd like to do is begin with the public library budget, and then move on to the history museum, and then we have some other funds that are listed after that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions about the process or for the city manager in general right now? All right. We turn it over to Mary Beth and Sue Sadowski.
Good evening, Mayor Morley and the city council. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight to present our budget. With me tonight is Library Director Mary Beth Harper. A few years ago, we started collecting user stories as a way to measure the value of the library to our community. Libraries traditionally collect numerical information from visitor counts, checkout rates, and program attendance to help gauge how we're doing within the library. While these numbers allowed us to compare from year to year and help us measure the success of a program due to attendance levels, they did not tell us the entire story. They did not tell the personal human side of what the library means to our community. I'm going to read you a few small samples from some of the stories that we've collected from our users. Number 1, "I met with an instructor, and together we pushed the publish button on my blog. I wouldn't have been able to have the courage to do this without her help." Signed Dawn, a retired teacher and Elmhurst resident. User number 2, "Regular patrons and friends, Mary Grace and Ruth, knew the benefit of attending EPL programs. They met in 2012 at a book discussion and have been enriching each other's lives with innovative library programming ever since." User number 3, "Larry, a businessman, finds EPL to be an invaluable resource for his company. He's had up to 50 of his agents meet at the first floor of meeting room, trying to find a space that could accommodate his company and provide the necessary technology proved very difficult for him. When he realized that he could rent the room on the first floor with an incredible IT system, it created a solution that he'll continue to use for years." User number 4, "Karen's son had spent months preparing to record a song at a Chicago recording studio, but when it flooded, she remembered reading about the EPL creative studio on the second floor. She asked the recording engineer about coming and using our equipment. He was surprised at the suggestion to actually use a library, but agreed to the plan after reviewing our list of available equipment." Karen wrote, "We were very grateful that our library had made the amazing facility available to our community." And finally, user number 5, Dave, an Elmhurst resident, recently had a conversation with a staff member about why people move to Elmhurst and often stay for many years. He sagely observed, "People move to Elmhurst for the schools, but they stay here for the There are many reasons why people use the library, and the library continues to evolve so that Elmhurst residents have access to resources that enrich their lives. Updated library spaces have been well received by our patrons. People of all ages enjoy crafting downstairs in the makeery, producing digital content upstairs in the creative studios. Our library of extraordinary things includes items that are not traditionally thought of as checkout items. When patrons find out that they can borrow an ice cream maker, an instant pot, or a film projector, among other things, they're always intrigued and follow up by saying something like, "Our library is the best library. This makes us happy to see patrons so delighted with their library." Now, I'm going to talk about the library building. It's hard to believe that the new library is 16 years old. The building has been beautifully maintained, and all the major spaces have been renovated to meet the changing needs of our community. The staff and the board have been planning for necessary repairs and upkeep as the building ages. We have carefully set aside money in our special reserve fund, and will continue to do so in order to ensure that we maintain the building to the same level people have come to expect. The cork drawer in the main lobby was recently replaced with carpet, and that has decreased the noise level in this heavy traffic area. The popular Lexicon Cafe has been renovated to replace worn wood and provide slightly more space, and the cafe operators are able to expand their food offering, and staff will have more room to move around during busy times. The official grand reopening was today. Before you tonight, you have our budget, which includes not only our operating expenses, but also the funds needed for the repayment of our building bonds. We are in the final years of paying off the building bonds, and will see significant increases to the bond payment for the next two years. We have worked out our plan with the Finance Department to take relatively modest levy increases until the bonds are paid off. After that, the levy will be reduced to reflect the payoff of the bonds. Finally, I'd like to thank you all for helping us make this library such a valuable resource to our community. Successful organizations always take a group effort. We need the skills of the staff to make the library and inviting an interesting place. We need the library Board of Trustees to provide guidance and support to the staff, and we need the residents of Elmhurst to continue to enjoy their library. So, on behalf of the board and in the spirit of teamwork and support, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council, as well as the city manager and the rest of city staff who help us on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Mary Beth, anything to add?
Just open for questions, please.
Okay. Council, the floor is yours. Any questions on the library that's listed in our budget? Alderman Palomsky?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Don't mean to interrupt. If and when you refer to the budget, please refer to a page and line item number. Thank you.
Just a question generally about the overall position of the library. I appreciate all the information. It's helpful to hear, and I like the more descriptive examples of what the library does. Have you tracked the number of visitors, though, this year?
Yes. Yep. We track. We track all the time. We have door counters that are taking counts. Last year, we were over 600,000, I believe, so I can't give you the exact number right now, but I can certainly get back to you with that.
Another question. I have also a question about parking. I understand there have been some changes to when there's availability in the library. Is there anything that I would point to, any potential planning for investing in additional parking, or any ideas about how to approach this need? I do know that there's been some additions to being able to identify where there's an open space, and I think that that works well.
Yeah. You know, we've been talking about parking for years, obviously, as our patrons have too, and we know that we're in an area, as most of Elmhurst is, where we're really landlocked, and there's not much around there. I know the college was talking about parking issues, too. I did attend their planning sessions, hoping they were going to build a garage. They're not, but I know they're going to get more parking. So, what we've been doing is sort of taking a different tactic as opposed to just kind of hoping we're going to get more land. We have been taking steps to try and alleviate our parking by limiting our meeting room usage, and I know that sounds really bad, but we're not limiting it greatly. We have limited it during certain hours of the day when it tends to be extremely busy in the library. Basically, that's between 3:00 and 5:00 in the afternoon, so we do not lend meeting rooms out during that time. That's definitely alleviated some of the issues. We've also taken steps to program a lot more thoughtfully. Our programs are really in demand, and we increased our program greatly several years ago, and now we're at that point where we're sort of at the saturation level, and we have to kind of think to ourselves, hey, we can't keep adding to the programming. We have to just kind of get... We've hit that sweet spot where we've got enough programming now. We don't need to keep adding more programming, and we're also making sure that our programs aren't... We don't have too many programs going on at the same time, which really fills up our parking lot. We're also, when we have a big library program, we're making sure that we aren't lending out the meeting room for a huge meeting space at that point. So, there's things like that that we're doing. And then we also started a campaign, a walk, ride, share campaign. That's also to help us be a little bit more green in this city. But when I look sometimes around and I see who's meeting at the library, we might, for instance, have the garden club, who meets regularly at the library, which is wonderful. But if we have 17 or 18 garden club members meeting at the library, chances are many of them know each other, and they might be able to pick each other up and share a ride to the library, and that might get rid of eight cars in the library parking lot at any given time. So, I know these are all kind of small things, but what we're hoping right now is these small things help alleviate some of those really log jam times. So, we've been doing the walk, ride, share campaign since the summer. I don't think it's gaining huge popularity, but we're really trying to get the message out there, and we're trying to keep it on people's minds. We've started decreasing the meeting room usage. That was, I think, around summertime, too, and again, we're being really thoughtful with our programs, and I can tell you that for the last couple of months, maybe two or three, I haven't been hearing the parking complaints like I was, which is great. It sort of tends to rear its ugly head every now and then, and then we kind of track what we're doing. And again, we found out we were just having too many programs coinciding together, we're having too many meeting rooms in use, and that was really jamming up the parking lot. So, it's been okay lately. You know, I'm not hearing as much from patrons, which is great. Now, the other thing I'm really interested in is delivery. I know that sounds crazy, but we're in a delivery world. I usually encourage people to come to the library and come to the building, but if we can help do something like that and kind of bring people what they want, where they want it, which everybody's so used to nowadays, that might be something on the horizon. So, we're really trying to get more creative with what we're thinking about as far as the parking issue goes, as opposed to saying, hey, we need more parking, we need more parking. That's where we're at right now.
Alderman Levin?
Thank you. I just had a question on line 8098, and maybe I missed it, but it looks like there's...
What page there, Scott?
Oh, you wanted Page 2. Page 172?
Yeah.
172, 8098.
Miss Laney's equipment?
Yeah. Is that something... Is that replacement, or is that something new?
Yeah. So, what I have budgeted for that this year is a new phone system. We replaced our phone system about seven or eight years ago, and it wasn't a great phone system, because I think if you remember at the time, or maybe you don't, we do. The phone system died right away, and it died all of a sudden, and we were without a phone system for about two weeks, and it was kind of crazy. So, we weren't able to buy what we really wanted at that point, which was a VoIP system. And now, the phone system's projected lifespan is about eight to 10 years, I believe, so we're right around that time, so we will be looking into a new phone system. We're also looking at three new servers, and a new self-checkout, and possibly another communication device for staff to wear and communicate with each other while they're actually... Without picking up a phone. So, there's a couple of big projects like that in there right now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, the makeery's awesome.
Oh, thank you.
My wife spends a lot of time at the makeery. She's mastered quite a few things. Also, 172, specific question, 50-01?
Yes.
08?
01.
Yep.
5001 building repair. So, you alluded to, you know, after 16 years, there are some repairs on the horizon. Looks like some pretty hefty repairs over the next couple of years at a high level. What sorts of things are you looking at?
So, next year, in this building line, we did combine, by the way, building and equipment line into one line, so it's all building right now. Just easier for us to budget, yeah. So, that's partially why that's so high, but we also do have a couple of projects in there. Next year, we're slated to replace the fire panel. That's a costly expense. It's all, of course, electronic. This last year, we replaced the heating panel. We also have been replacing over the past couple of years lighting, a lot of lighting. We're doing more energy efficient lighting, and that's absolutely helped with cost of light bulbs and other things, also staff time, not having to go up and change as many light bulbs. So, there's definitely things like that, and then all of our maintenance contracts are in this line, and we always budget a certain amount of money for other repairs. We're also... We did budget for an engineering study this year, and that'll tell us a little bit more about the condition of our roof and some of our major components, being that the building is 16 years old.
Excellent. Mayor, I have one more question, if that's okay?
Yes.
So, you mentioned final payment is coming up on the horizon. I didn't catch what year that's anticipated?
We should be done 2021, is the last year we'll budget for the tax, excuse me, the bond payment, and then in 2022, we should be reducing the levy.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
Any additional questions? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Palomsky already asked about the parking. That's obviously an ongoing concern, and I think I remember hearing relatively the same answer last year, maybe even the year before, where you were proactively looking into that to kind of distribute the parking concerns over a greater period of time. I was going to ask this question, but I actually did my research about a minute ago, and I'm very happy, because I think I've asked this question anywhere from the last three to five years, to see the online meeting reservation system. I know that's been a challenge ever since you guys have opened, essentially trying to coordinate via phone calls the high demand of the meeting rooms, so I was pleasantly surprised. Obviously, I have not used it as of late, so I don't know when that was instituted, but that was really good to see. And just a comment, or maybe even a suggestion, and maybe you've already tracked this in some way, but I know our trolley during the summer stops right near the library, half a block, a block down the road. Maybe that could help alleviate some of your parking concerns if it hasn't already, or are you able to track that in any way, shape, or form in a survey, et cetera?
Yeah. I think that's a very interesting idea, and I know the trolley, I think it stops right at the art museum, right? So, it's right there.
Correct.
And we haven't, to this point, advertised the trolley services, a hey, take the trolley to the library, as opposed to driving your car to the library, but it's certainly something that's an interesting concept and something we could think about looking at. I know residents love the trolley. We also do a storytime on the trolley, I think, so it's very popular, so that's certainly something we can look into. We've thought about things like that, shuttle buses, and, you know, valet parking, but we'd still have to park the cars someplace with valet. So, anyway, I think all those ideas are interesting ideas, and I think any one of them would be something we'd be willing to try, for sure.
Alderman Dunn?
The meeting room just got up. I know I told you last year at this meeting that I would have that done, and I finally told staff we have to get this going, so I'm back at this meeting this year. The meeting room sign up is online now.
I wasn't going to bring that up, but you brought it up last year.
It's there.
Alderman Dunn?
Yeah. I was wondering on Page 169 with the fines, I think I remember you saying last year you were maybe going to do away with those. The City of Chicago has done that. It seems to be a trend. You have $70,000 budgeted for it, so that's nice to have, but continue with that.
So, yes, you're absolutely right. I told you about that last year. It is definitely a trend, even since last year when I talked about it. There's more and more libraries jumping on board with that, including Chicago Public, which was basically a major announcement. So, we've been going over it with the board. I've been presenting them with a lot of information. They're educating themselves on it. They're still reluctant right now to let go of the $70,000, and I think we're waiting to see where this goes. Again, more and more libraries, as it trends, the board is being kept informed about how that's trending. What I foresee is that eventually, most libraries are going to go fine free. The argument tends to be that if libraries go fine free, it alleviates a barrier for people to check out items who might not actually be able to pay fines, and of course, I think that Chicago just came out with something that said, since they reduced the fines, they've gotten back all kinds of materials, and they certainly have populations in certain areas of the city where if people take out books and they have excessive fines, they would not have... Not be able to check out more items, and that might really hurt them. In this town, that's really not our problem. We don't have the socioeconomic issues that some other areas have, but I think it's goodwill, and it's kind of... It's an easier transaction for staff, so we'll see where that goes. Just know that I'm keeping the board informed. I'm giving them all kinds of articles, and we keep revisiting this every couple of months. So, okay?
Sure. Follow on.
Follow-on, unrelated question. I don't know if you want to turn back to it, but on twenty-eighth, there's a table of headcount, and I'm noticing the library, two years ago, was at thirty-one. You're budgeting thirty-nine for this year. That's a pretty big jump in full-time equivalents. So if you can comment on full-time, part-time, volunteers, what's going on, if it's gone up that much?
So the jump isn't that big. We've been increasing. When I first started, I think we had about thirty-four full-time. We're now at thirty-seven full-time, and we'll be thirty-eight next year, because I am adding one more full-time position. However, our part-time positions have decreased from about, last year, a hundred and forty-one. We're down to a hundred and thirty-two this year. So we're getting ready for the fifteen-dollar-an-hour minimum wage hike that's happening soon. We're really tightening up our part-time staff and making sure we're doing, being as efficient as we can. So we're not hiring back some of the part-time positions as people leave. We do have a high rate of turnover in a lot of those lower positions, especially the shelving positions, which are, tend to be our very part-time positions. I have added a couple of full-time positions because we tend to obviously get a lot more out of those staff members, and we're not having a revolving door of hiring people. For instance, I added last year a full-time graphic artist, because we had a part-time graphic artist. Graphic artists was always leaving. We were always rehiring the position. It was getting harder and harder to find someone, and there's a lot of cost involved with hiring people. So we hired a full-time person, and it's been great. She's here to stay, hopefully, for at least a while. So this new position that we're doing is a position in the circulation department. This person will be doing circulation, is check-in, check-out, shelving of books, moving all those items in and out of the library, and putting them back on the shelves. So this full-time person will be more of a specialist in that department. Will be doing a lot of the heavy-duty stuff as far as shelving goes and collection goes, and therefore, we'll be able to alleviate some of the part-time positions. We'll keep looking at all those positions as we move forward. Okay? So it's, I think, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what table you took that from, but it's not a jump of, we didn't add, what did you say, first thirty-one or something? Going back a few years. Okay, yeah, yeah. So we're only adding one full-time position this year, but we have added a couple since I've been here. So I think about four or five, okay?
Additional questions? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does the library have a policy related to the operating fund or the capital replacement fund in terms of fund balance at the year-end, in either of those? How much money you have to have in the bank at the end of the year?
So we don't have a written policy on that, but what we do know is that our fund balance in the general fund, we need about two-point-five million dollars in there because we don't collect any taxes until June. Our first large tax payment is in June, so we basically operate from, since we changed our fiscal year to January to December. Our first big tax payment comes in June, so from January until June, we operate on reserves. So Tom and I have been over this and figuring out what we're doing with our fund balance, so we figure we need about two-point-five million in there in reserves. The capital, capital reserve has about one-point-two million in it. It'll be just over a million after we take the transfer out this year to do some of the improvements. And for that, we will be getting the capital study done this year, and then we'll be predicting how much money we need moving forward over the next couple of years as the building ages. So I can't say I have a formal policy yet, although I would say after we get this engineering study done, we'll have a lot more information to move forward with on that. And again, what we're keeping in our general fund balance is at least two-point-five million moving forward right now in order for us to operate between January and June, when our first big payment comes in.
Can you follow up?
Yes.
So the city council for the operation of the city of Elmhurst has, finance committee has created various policies in terms of how we manage money, and obviously, we talked earlier, the city manager went over kind of the operating fund range, general fund range goal that we want to have as a policy. If the library or the library's board were to consider something like that, would that proceed, this is a procedural question, would that procedurally, to more formalize what you're kind of already doing, would that procedurally go through city, the council, or through your board and your staff?
Our board, yeah. That would be our board to approve that. It's certainly something, and I think it's good practice. I agree with you. Most library districts have that, for sure. We just operate more with the finance department of the city, so we're sort of following your general finance guidelines, obviously. We're not sort of, we are following your general guidance, your general finance guidelines. But it's, and until a couple of years ago, when we changed our fiscal year, and now with the buildup of our special reserve and moving forward with the aging building, I think it's a great time for us to develop something like that. I think when we get this engineering study done, it'll tell us a lot more about fund, it'll give us some more information about fund balances. Thank you. Sure.
Additional questions? Alvin Levin.
Thank you. I was just reflecting on your discussion with the council on the parking issue, and I appreciate that you've taken steps to address that situation, but I also hope that you and perhaps the council can help think a little bit more, because it seems like essentially what you're saying is by cutting out programs and access, we're solving the parking problem. I can tell you how to solve it completely. You know, if you take it to the extreme, you'll have an empty lot. But it's, there's such wonderful programs, and, you know, the meeting rooms, I've used them myself to meet, you know, with groups around the community, and I thought, gee, if I had one at three o'clock, or four o'clock, or five, and I couldn't do it at that time, you know, because there's parking issues, it's too bad. And you talk about all these new programs you have, and then you can't expand, not because of budget, not because of people to do the programs, but because of parking. So I hope we can continue to look at that together.
I agree with you, and we really did think a lot about that. And just let me clarify one thing. When I talk about the meeting room usage being restricted during that time, it's not the smaller study rooms where people tend to meet one-on-one or a couple of people. It's the larger meeting rooms that accommodate a lot of people, just to clarify that one. So those study rooms are extremely popular. They're extremely popular all day long for small meetings, and that, I think, we'd have huge outcry if we limited that. So we haven't done that. And I agree with you, we did think a lot about this. It's kind of, we're trying to do some of these things that don't have huge impact right now at all. I mean, that don't have a lot of impact, and we can still do most of what we're doing. So, but I agree, we'd love a better solution.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mary Beth and Sue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see you later.
History museum?
All right, I'm going to turn the floor over first to...
One second, the chair is not there. Whoops, didn't see.
Okay. Dave and Rob, you ready to go?
We are.
Floor is yours.
All right, I'm going to turn this over first to Rob Butler, who is the newly sworn in president of the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. Rob?
Thank you. Mayor Morley, city manager Grabowski, assistees, assistant city manager cop, and members of city council, thank you for allowing us this evening to be here as part of the annual budget hearings. My name is Robert Butler, and as Dave said, I am indeed the newly-elected president of the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. I'm hoping to take a few minutes to talk about the foundation's support of the Elmhurst History Museum and highlight some of the achievements of the past year. Our mission at the foundation is to act as the fundraising arm of the Elmhurst History Museum in the Churchville one-room schoolhouse. We support the museum by advocating and educating on its behalf, and by fundraising to support an annual grant to help the museum reach its goals and extend the impact of the city's approved budget. This year, 2019, the museum staged five major exhibits, sponsoring two traveling exhibits and creating three more in-house. It was an incredibly busy but exciting twelve months, and the foundation was proud to help the talented staff realize this demanding goal. The newest of these exhibits, On the Right Track, by rail to Chicago and beyond, is one of the museum's own creations, celebrating the history of railroads in the area. It opens in nine days' time, and we hope you'll all attend the opening reception at the Chamber of Commerce's after-hour events on November thirteenth. The foundation continues to expand its ability to assist with such exhibits. Traditionally, before the opening of each one, the foundation hosts a reception for its members to expand awareness of the museum's newest effort. In addition, we've been working to secure local sponsors to help fund exhibits, to give local businesses the opportunity to help support the museum, and to gain for themselves social media and exhibit hall exposure. The two sponsors for On the Right Track are Community Bank of Elmhurst and the Prairie Forge Group, and we're very grateful for their help. Beyond assisting with the five exhibits, a record for the museum, by the way, the foundation hosted a variety of events this year. To name only a few, in February, the foundation sponsored the candidates forum ahead of local elections. In March, the foundation marched with museum staff in the St. Patrick's Day Parade along Spring Road, as well as sponsoring the Lincoln Douglas Debate reenactment here at City Hall. In April, the foundation again held the annual Ruth Strand poster contest, and in May, marched in the Memorial Day Parade. In July, the vintage baseball game, fast becoming a local favorite, was played again on Elmhurst College's Mall. And in September, all five-hundred-and-twenty tickets for the Quarry Tour sold out in just over an hour. September also saw the fifth annual Craft Beer Fest, which has become the foundation's foremost fundraising event. It was held on the museum campus on a beautiful Saturday afternoon. This year's fest featured more sponsors, seventy-one, more brewers, fifty-five, more attendees from more locations, fifty-seven different towns and the city, and more than one-hundred volunteers, including Alderman Levin, Deuter, Dunn, manager Grabowski and family, and Howard Killian from Public Works. The contest for best brewer was won by the Elmhurst Brewing Company, which had created a special microbrew for the event. The funds generated at the fest go towards supporting the museum, the schoolhouse, and educational programs at both. In the coming year, the foundation hopes to maintain and increase our visibility. As always, we'll be making a grant to the museum in assistance of planned exhibits for 2020. We'll also be helping fund the museum's upgrades to its gallery lighting, as well as improvements to its core exhibit, the prize-winning By All Accounts, and ongoing support for the microfilm scanner lease. And we look forward to the results of the city's space and needs analysis as we think about the future. Many of our board's members are here tonight, and with the chair's permission, I'd like to acknowledge them.
Absolutely. How many past presidents are here?
That's a good question. Three, I think.
There we go. Very nice.
Our board is a dynamic one. The donor rate is one-hundred percent, and each member serves on multiple foundation committees. The annual fund drive is just about to start, and we hope to see another increase in giving this year. We would like to invite each of you to become a member of the foundation, to forge a closer connection with this gem of a museum that we have in the middle of our city. We thank you for your support of the museum in the past and hope to see it extend into the future, for even history needs a future. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Rob. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
All right. I want to say thank you to the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation, to the city of Elmhurst for continuing to support the museum, and want to take this opportunity to just highlight a couple of achievements in 2019 and talk about a couple of the broader goals for 2020 as we go into the budget discussions here. With your help, working together, we just crunched the numbers from October here the other day, we are on track to have a new record-breaking year. I thought twenty-eighteen would be a tough one to beat with Snoopy and the Red Baron. We just did our year-to-date analysis, and we are actually ahead of where we were last year at this time, so barring any calamities in the weather, and we did have snow in October, I think we're on track to set a new attendance record, so very excited about that. As Rob indicated, a record, five exhibits going on, and they're really pulling in a lot of people from out of town, we're finding as well. Last year, we talked a little bit about streamlining and tightening our analysis of our visitors as they come to the museum, and so we've crafted a new intercept survey just to get a better idea of what's going on. And we're finding that fifty-one percent coming from out of town, forty-nine percent from in-town, with the exception of one exhibit, that's Worlds of Wonder. That was our summer blockbuster, created in-house, a celebration of Chicagoland amusement parks. Fifty-five percent of our visitors were visiting for the first time, seventy-eight percent came from out of town, twenty-two percent resided in Elmhurst, and sixty-seven of them, that's two out of three, indicated plans to shop, dine, or visit other local attractions here. So we're having some meaningful and measurable impact, I like to think. In addition to the exhibits that we had going, we had a pretty exciting year. Hosted a dramatic recreation of the Lincoln Douglas Debate right here in these chambers, which was a ton of fun, I have to say. We had a special celebration for the centennial of Carl Sandberg's arrival in Elmhurst. We piloted a new outreach program from Prairie to Tree Town, Tales of Old Elmhurst, which is starting to book up now, and kind of explores the history of our community from foundation to present with a lot of really great historic images. Created a new camp program, Time Trekkers, for grades two to five. Staged a number of new events in support of our exhibits, including a carnival-themed Family Fun Day for Worlds of Wonder, which drew nearly a thousand people onto our campus in a single night. And we've got a, we're going to have a great time with the local model railroad enthusiasts for On the Right Track. We're already going to have them for opening weekend, taking over the education center. We piloted a new reminisce program, which is aimed at seniors with Alzheimer's and dementia. This is kind of on the cutting edge of what museums are doing these days. We piloted Museum Maker Monday programs on summer break, highly successful. We're going to revisit that next year. Piloted a Throwback Thursday lecture aimed at senior audiences, which filled the capacity. We're going to expand that next year. We reprised our annual Elmhurst Quarry Tour, as Rob mentioned, and other than a rock-and-roll concert, I've never seen anything sell out so fast in my life. It's absolutely amazing. And it is fascinating, too, for those who haven't been on it before. Reprised a lot of our family-friendly events, such as Museum Day, Vintage Baseball Game, the Ruth Strand poster contest, and, as I said, on track to establish a new all-time high for attendance at the museum. Next year, we've got four major exhibits slated for 2020. We're going to be carrying over On the Right Track for a bit. We have Once Upon a Playground, which is going to coincide with the centennial of the Elmhurst Park District. This is an examination of how our playground equipment has changed over time and all of the different themes, and there's going to be some neat programming to go with that. Our big summer blockbuster is going to be the Midwestern Road Trip, which is going to be a nostalgia-fueled exhibition, looking at multiple generations of road trips. We like to say all roads lead to Elmhurst. They also lead a way. Where did we go? What are the fun things we did? What was the journey like? We're going to have a lot of fun with that, I think, as well. And we're going to close out with a traveling exhibit called Frank Lloyd Wright: Architecture of the Interior. We are talking about some upgrades to the museum exhibit halls as well. We're going to be doing a new narrative called Lessons with the School Marm, which will be an interactive experience for our visitors. Also, some larger, more robust touchscreen technology for the Elmhurst Biography Wall, and upgraded LED lighting in the gallery as well. It's going to look a lot more professional in there when we do our new shows, and be a little more cost-effective and environmentally friendly as well. We've got quarterly history spotlights in the By All Accounts exhibits as well, calling attention to major anniversaries. A lot of major family-friendly programs, including a vintage car show on our campus with fifties and sixties concert featuring the Neverly Brothers. It's kind of our big family fun day for July. That's been a huge success. And we're going to be doing a tenth anniversary celebration of the restoration of the Churchville one-room schoolhouse as well, so we're looking at a major event for that. And partnering with the Churchville Cemetery Association for a big cemetery walk in the fall. Those are highly popular, highly successful, can see a lot of people coming for that as well. We'll be revising and expanding some of our pilot programs, including the Museum Maker Mondays for children and caregivers, going to a quarterly Throwback Thursday lecture series for seniors, looking at three new outreach programs for adult audience as well. One that's going to be based on our Worlds of Wonder exhibit, looking at the history of regional amusement parks. A second one, looking at regional railroads, and a third one, sharing stories of local Civil War veterans, including some original letters from the front. And then creating, back in the day, a brand-new history-themed children's day camp for grades two to five, looking at history and architecture-themed walking... two to five, looking at history and architecture-themed walking bicycle and virtual tears to support the Frank Lloyd Wright exhibit that's coming in the fall as well. And a week-long railroad-themed spring break series for when the kids are out of school, kind of capitalizing on the Snoopy Palooza program we did two years ago. That was highly successful. A lot of local families looking for fun things to do with the kids during spring break. And then some really cool living history performances, celebrating some major milestones, including our distinguished alumnus Leslie Goddard coming back as women's suffrage pioneer Alice Paul, and RJ Lindsay coming to represent the first executive director of the National Parks Service, Stephen T. Mather. We're also working with the local Eagle Scout to do a prairie restoration project on the campus of the Churchville one-room schoolhouse, and a lot of fun continuing programs as well, like the Vintage Baseball Game. So kind of a few highlights there. You have before you our proposed budget for 2020. I just call attention to a couple. For the most part, most of the line items you'll see are pretty much in keeping with the last couple of years. The couple of exceptions that I would want to point out, one is that we have increased the request for the exhibit budget, but that will be offset, thankfully, by the generosity of the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation, and that's gonna include some major upgrades to the By All Account exhibit. We are looking at adding a little bit to the repair and maintenance line item as well, because we want to scrape and paint the one-room schoolhouse for its 10th anniversary and have it standing tall. And since it's a national register site, we want to make sure it's really taken care properly. And, I mean, those are kind of the, I think, major points. Open it up to questions, comments?
Dave, I got a quick question. You mentioned the Worlds of Wonder exhibit?
Yes, sir.
Which I saw, very nice. You said we did, we created that one? Has anybody asked who, is that one that can travel?
It is not one that can travel, and that was a very difficult decision, but because we had five exhibits crammed into this year, that's about one and a half more than we can typically handle. We really didn't have the wherewithal and the facility to transform that into an easily travelable exhibit, if you will. It will live on as an outreach program in a PowerPoint at least, so I think we're gonna be able to use a lot of the R&amp;D that went into it. But it was wildly popular. Our weekly average attendance for that actually is now the new gold standard for in-house exhibits, eclipsing Toys in the Hood, which was the gold standard up until this past year.
Any questions for Mr. Olberg? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. And I think, Dave, I think you went through 330 days out of the 365 in 2020.
Sorry.
No, I appreciate it, and it sounds like, which is a very good thing, that the museum continues to reinvent themselves, continue to expand, continue to do other things, which is great to hear. I think over the last decade or so, it's incredible on the evolution that I personally have seen with the museum. So thank you, as well as the board, as well as your staff, as well as previous as well. Just a couple of things I want to throw out there, more than anything. Has the museum thought about doing more, teaming up with other bodies, be it Elmhurst College, be it corporate sponsorships, other museums? Has that been tossed around, and what has been the discussion points on that?
Yeah, great question, actually. And yes, we, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna give you day number 331 from this year, too. We did actually team up with Elmhurst College this past year for the traveling exhibition, The Power of Children, which told the stories of Ruby Bridges, Anne Frank, and Ryan White. And we wanted to really be able to have some kind of a keystone speaker come to the community to give a modern-day linkage to the figures looked at at the exhibit. And Elmhurst College was a terrific partner on this, brought in Shiza Shaheed, who is the co-founder and original CEO of the Malala Foundation, which has raised a tremendous amount of money to educate young girls around the world. And I think that has really opened the door to some beautiful partnerships going forward. We do plan to work with the college in 2021 as they approach their Big Sess was Centennial as well. We want to engage some of the students there to work with us on an actual exhibit and to really work in partnership there. Park District is gonna be working with us in partnership for the Once Upon a Playground exhibit. We're gonna do a history of the Park District as one of the supporting programs for that actually, certainly reaching out and working a lot more with the schools these days as well. But there's a ton of great potential. And to sponsorships, you should all have a double-sided piece of paper in front of you. On one side, you're going to find the four major exhibits for 2020. On the other side, you will see our sponsorship levels there, actually. This is a fairly new sponsorship program that was created by the Foundation. Last year, we piloted it. It was pretty successful. We brought in 12 sponsors to actually help to support exhibits. I see this expanding in the coming year. It's done pretty well. We just sent out packets to a lot of the businesses out there, and we definitely want more private sector investment involvement in the museum. That makes for a much stronger community, much stronger museum.
Follow-up. Yeah, and I thank you for that summary, and I do want to put on record, I guess, in regards to seeing the Elmhurst Heritage Museum Foundation donations over the past years and upcoming, I think it's $52,900 that is being planned for this upcoming budget cycle from them. So everything that's been going on, I think that the programs have definitely excelled, more of them, more outreach to the community, people coming in from out of town, the Heritage Foundation helping out more as well. So kudos to everybody on all sides of that. The only question I have is, the, I think it's still called the Education Center?
Yes, sir.
The Education Center, and what are the future plans? And this might be in regards to the study you already mentioned, so I might have just answered it right there. But what are the plans for the Education Center? How will it be used, and what about storage of all our collections?
Yeah, well, that's a big question. I, I mean, I, we are in the middle of a site and facilities and needs analysis right now, so we're trying to assess the best, I'd say, the best paths forward for that entire campus and treating it more of a campus structure at this point. But that's really still in development at this point. We've done a little bit of modest rehabilitation in the meantime in this year. It looks, if you haven't been there, you won't recognize it if you come on the 13th. And it certainly, I gotta say, it is handy to have it right now for our programming. We've been packing that thing to capacity lately, so... I don't know, Jim, if there's anything you wanna...
What Dave said, we participated in a study which looked at the entire campus, actually all the facilities. Certainly, the Education Center is a viable and used facility now. Could it be better? Of course. But as we talked about in our capital plan, we've got a lot of wants and needs out there, and so we're trying to prioritize those. And so we will be bringing that study to the Public Affairs and Safety Committee sometime soon, and we have to talk about what that schedule looks like and when.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. David, impressive on the attendance piece, for sure. The attraction from out of town, what's your outreach? How are others hearing about the museum?
It's a combination of factors. I mean, we, we're really fortunate, of course, that we have really a first-rate, you know, marketing and PR person that works at the museum, and I can't say enough about Patrice and what she's done for the museum overall. But a lot of this is being driven by combination factors. One is we've been trying to sync the summer exhibits to some sort of a broad Chicagoland theme that's gonna attract a much broader audience, and boy, oh, boy, it certainly did this year. We capitalized a lot on the success of Snoopy and the Red Baron when we hosted that in 2018. Our Facebook followers doubled in that period, and they've only grown since then because of some of these broader-themed exhibits. And I gotta say, the Facebook piece really does a lot for us, and it helps us reach a broader audience. I can tell you with the Craft Beer Fest, there were a couple of new innovative things that were done as well to advertise that, including advertising through the app Untappd, if you've never heard of it. If you're a craft beer snob, you know what it is, like myself, but, but I gotta tell you, I mean, we had a much, much wider audience come in this time because of some of that and some of the creative Facebook marketing as well, that our friend Dave Noble Pintz did with us as well in cooperation with the Foundation. The eBlast list continues to grow, a very inexpensive way to reach a lot of homes. But I think a lot of it is just being very strategic on the themes and finding things that are gonna appeal to multiple generations, having interactive things that are gonna appeal to kids and grownups as well. I can't say enough about the virtual roller coaster in the Worlds of Wonder exhibit. I don't know how many of you saw that. We designed that for kids. I can't tell you how many 60- and 70-year-old people we had faces pressed up against that because it was all of the rides of their youth, which was kind of an interesting and surprise factor as well. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, absolutely. One more question. So Frank Lloyd Wright's gonna be a big, big one.
I gotta think so, yeah.
So the exhibit sponsors, so the numbers here, are these individuals, or are they local merchants, restaurants, et cetera?
We sent this out to a number of members of the business community, but certainly an individual could sign on as a sponsor as well if they wanted to. Thank you.
Alderman Levin?
A question and a comment. The question, and I don't know why, don't remember the answer, if I'm supposed to, but on page 150, line 6039, the EHMF Endowment, so this is the money that is raised by the Foundation. Is that money, is that all of the money they raise, or is that what they contribute to the museum?
That is the, that is the annual grant that we put in a request for, and that they contribute to the museum in each year. And you'll see, it's actually, it's, it's gone up the last couple of years, and I'm happy to say it's gone up again in 2020. And we, in addition to that, there's gonna be some additional underwriting for the lighting that actually is not included in there.
So I was trying to figure out why it shows up as an expense.
I can never quite figure that piece out.
I want to have more expenses like that in my life.
Yeah, me too.
So there's actually a revenue line item that's for $80,000 to cover all of that. It's on page 93, Other Income, and it's line 14-00, Museum Trust Fund. So you'll see that, $80,000. So that's actually the revenue line item. These are expenditures associated with what they will spend on different items and stuff throughout the year.
So the 6039 is actually expenditures that will be used?
Correct.
Okay. Not intuitive, but I got what you're saying. I did want to say, I've had a lot, particularly because you're before our committee, you've really invigorated things a lot. I've attended a number of events, and they're all really remarkable, and I'm not just talking about the beer event, but, and I wanted to thank Mr. Baker for your leadership over the past year or two. You've stepped up to the plate, and the Foundation's really done a wonderful job, so I'm looking forward to more in the future. Huzzah. All right.
Thank you, sir.
From Toledo.
This new sponsorship program, who receives the sponsorship revenue?
Sponsorship revenue does go to the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation, and then that becomes, that can go into part of the gift, the support for the exhibits as we go forward.
Does, follow-up, please.
Yeah.
Does the museum expend time promoting the sponsorship program?
This is something the Foundation actually put this piece together. The design work was done under the auspices of the Foundation. They paid for the research and design of all of this. We actually had a stuffing party where they came over and stuffed all the folders and sent them out.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it?
Additional questions, comments?
Yeah. Yeah, and I was gonna say, Ken Bartels has helped with this as well.
Anyone else? I do want to echo Alderman Levin's comments as well. I ask a lot of my thanks to past president, Mr. Baker, for all his hard work, and I wish Mr. Butler all the best. And Dave, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And thanks to the Heritage Foundation for all of its support. Certainly means a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Jim and Tom, that's all we need for the next one, all right, for motor fuel?
Correct.
Along others?
Yep. So page 182, 183, we'll talk MFT, and this is the state allocation. As I mentioned in my opening comments, we will be receiving additional revenues this year due to the increase in the gas tax from the state. And while typically in the past we have used those funds for salaries of street-related employees and salt purchases, we do anticipate using some of that in a road project. And if you turn to page 186 on the J-Form, it tells you that we're basically saving up to complete a project on Brush Hill from Commonwealth to Euclid. And so in 2020, we'll be doing the design and engineering and then complete that in 2021. So what that will do, it does, as you can see, in 2020, the fund balance goes up and carries over, and then in 2021, that is depleted to get back to where our policy is of the 15% of expenditures, revenues, excuse me, revenues. So if you have any questions on motor fuel tax, we're happy to answer those.
I'm curious, I should know this. I know we've talked about this. So tax on gallon of gas went up 19 cents in July, and we get a fraction of that. How much out of that 19 cents do we get?
I'm not sure exactly on the cents per gallon that it went up, but basically the taxes doubled. You would assume that our revenues would double, but we were only getting about 50% of that, so...
That's what I was asking. Don't assume when Springfield's involved. Okay. Questions for city manager Tom Truzine? Alderman Levin?
I have two questions. We've spoken in the past about, well, actually, aside from the increase from the state portion of the tax, are we selling as much gas in Elmhurst? Is that a fairly constant amount of gallons sold?
In our local tax, it's a penny and a half per gallon, and it appears to be stable, so we have not seen any decrease in the number of gallons sold significantly.
The other question I had is the, on page 185, I don't know, 185, the 189, those, the allocation for electrical, is that, I assume, because we're using that for electrical-related street lights and electric service on roads?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Any additional questions? Okay, let's move on.
Next, we will get into the TIFF funds, starting on page 226. You can see TIFF 1 is closed, so that's why column 212, I mean, it's closing in 2019, final number, so closed in 2021. Skipping over to TIFF 2, if you recall, that's a fund that we closed in 2018 and created a new TIFF fund that had a portion of that in it, which we'll get to in a minute. TIFF 3 is Route 83 and St. Charles, and that is slated to end in 2021. Within that, though, we have some expenditures for some land acquisition, possibly some other public improvements, or possibly surplus as we move forward with different agreements that the council's aware of. Moving on to TIFF 4, this is the North York Street. In this one, we have, if... In this one, we have, if council will recall, we established funds for facade renovations and sign improvements, so we do have some dollars budgeted for that. We have some roadway improvements planned and also paying down that line of credit. Oh, excuse me, Elmhurst 255. Thank you, Tom. TIF 5 is the new Church Road Lake Street. Council recall, the big improvement there was Elmhurst BMW, and we have a line of credit payment towards that. Again, have some facade renovations, sign potential in that area. And then finally, the downtown TIF, which is our newest, and in there, we have land acquisition expenditures, again, facade renovations, sign improvements, utility relocation expenses, and other incentive programs. So we're happy to answer any questions about any of the TIF funds.
Alderman Dunne.
I was just wondering on the North York TIF, is there money budgeted for sidewalks for that? There was some kind of increase.
So on page, on CEB 90 is the North York sidewalk improvements, and you'll see that there's an amount in 2020, and then the major part of the project is in 2022. But those are, it is built into the budget.
Any additional questions?
So $115,000 is for preliminary engineering and design on CEB 90.
Okay.
Thank you. On page 246, line item 60-18, developer incentive. It looks like our plan is to budget $120,000 every year, estimated for this year is $50,000. What are these incentives for? I mean, it seems too small, quite frankly, to be a TIF incentive, so what are these incentives?
So as City Manager Grabowski mentioned earlier, a year ago, I believe, the committee and council approved three new programs or upgrades to the facade program and the retail, and then added a sign program. So that line item includes the retail grant program of $100,000 and the sign program for 20. It's really just an estimate. When we met with the committee, that's what, you know, the committee agreed on, that where staff would try to fund those projects at that level.
Thank you. Because I saw that the facade program was a separate line item below, so I was kind of confused on what that line item would represent. 6061 City Center Incorporated, is this the, I believe, policy, I don't know if that's the right term, but the policy that was passed on dividing up the percentages across the two TIFs on what is allocated to City Center, the two whole properties from this TIF that are in City Center is making up 20% of what is allocated, I believe, out of the $67,000 between the two TIFs?
Between the two TIFs, yeah, I'd have to take a look, but in this TIF, we're estimating $11,400. And again, that's the pass-through money that's collected in the TIF for the SSA tax levy. So that's the pass-through amount.
On same page, 246, 80-26, other public improvements. Can you expand on that $181,000 plus that's planned, please?
I'll have to try to take a look at my detail, but I believe the $115,000 is built in there that we mentioned earlier for the sidewalks, and then I need to take a look to see what else is made up of that.
Okay. The only other question, and I'd like to add this to the circle backs, would be about the roadway improvements. It's on the J form on the next page. I believe Alderman Palomski brought up the topic during the capital expenditure discussion. I just want to do a deeper dive on that line item, roadway improvements.
Page is that?
80-15 on 246, and it's further explained on the J form on the next page.
Okay. All right. Additional questions? Alderman Levin.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can you repeat that? Tom and I were talking when Alderman Bram asked for that, I'm sorry.
80-26 is the line item on page 246, and the J form is on the following page.
Okay.
Sorry.
So.
No, 80-15, roadway improvements on page 246.
Correct. So the 240 that's budgeted is part of, as again mentioned, in the CEB, those are the concrete streets that are being redone, pretty much with an overlay, asphalt overlay, and those streets actually happen to be within that TIF, so that's why it's being recorded there. You'll see some in general fund, some in this TIF, some in, I think, TIF 5 also.
Understood. My, the reason why I want to put it as a deeper discussion from a circle back is not what it is, it's more about how do we go about paying for it? Is utilizing the TIF funds at any percentage the right direction to go?
Okay.
One more. Alderman Bram asked for a breakdown of that $181,000. That is the $115,000 for the North York sidewalks, $41,200 for the York and I-290 interchange, and $25,000 for other improvements.
Thank you. Additional questions? Alderman Levin?
And when wondering on page 256, I see there's an intergovernmental of $1 million, 295, which I know is grant money for the metro station, unless I read it wrong. But what was, is it, what is the source of the grant funds? I don't remember where those came from.
Which line item, Alderman?
Well, it's on 256, intergovernmental, better, 257, line 0101, federal grants.
Those would be part of the CMAC funds that we were receiving.
I think.
We're in a little bit of a gray area as far as what we can use, what we can't use so far, but that's what that represents.
Thank you.
Alderman Brennan?
As a carry-on from that discussion, so on 259, it reflects the 1.295. Is that the, that's the capital side of it, expenditure? Is that, is it coincidental, it's the same number, or is it coincide back to the grant?
It coincides to what we estimate Phase 2 design to cost. As we've talked about at committee, we're kind of in a gray area as far as local spending versus grant funding when we don't have an I dot approved agreement yet. So that's what we estimate for Phase 2 right now to move forward with, so those two coincide directly. It could be grant, but it could be local.
So is 1.295 a big enough number for next year?
Director Killian assures me it is.
Thank you.
Additional questions? All right, let's move on.
Okay, next, very exciting, bond and interest funds, page 265. I'm going to turn that over to Tom.
I get the interesting stuff. I'm ready. So the bond and interest funds start on page 265, that's Fund 405. This fund we use to pay the debt service on that, the borrowings that are from the general fund, stormwater fund, TIF funds, the non-enterprise business-like funds. So you'll see as the revenue source are really all transfers in from those funds I mentioned that pay the debt service. Our debt service is paid in March and September. March is principal and interest, and September is interest only. You'll see the expenditures on page 268 allocated by each of the bond issues that are standing, and a couple of the proposed 2019 and an estimated 2020 bond issue also. Based on, Alderman, what City Manager Grabowski mentioned earlier, the 19 bond issue and any future bond issues right now, as proposed in the budget, would be funded through a tax levy and stuff, so you'll see those revenues in, mostly in the general fund and the stormwater fund, but then transfers into here. The second fund that makes up this grouping starts on page 269. That fund is actually closed, the council recall. That was our sales tax revenue bond that we issued to assist in the Route 83 development. That debt service was completely funded by the developer, and they decided that they wanted to pay that off early, so we defeased it, and this is just here for historical value for the previous years since we record 17 and 18 that we report, so that's why this fund is there also, open for any questions.
Alderman Toledo.
Just like to underscore what Director Trezine mentioned to the council when he was going through the general obligation bond schedule, because it's getting late and we're all getting a little tired, but any future debt issuances will be required to increase property taxes or go on the property tax levy to pay for them, unless, which is what City Manager Grabowski mentioned in his opening statement, the finance committee can come up with some creative solutions like stormwater fee, increased home rule sales tax, other things like abating and not abating bond, or issues. So the point is, is I just want to underscore that in case it was glossed over in our late hour here. Thank you.
Well, you did say you were going to get creative, right? Your committee? We look forward to?
Not promised.
We look forward to that creativity. All about creativity. Additional comments or questions that relates to our bonds?
Fudge factor.
Seeing none, we shall move on.
Next, our trust and agency funds, and we'll start with the police and firefighter pension funds. Made some earlier comments about that. Generally, both funds are about 65% funded, for take, depending on what the market's doing, of course. Also, what I mentioned is that we changed the, the percentage for the, our expectation, actually, the assumption, thank you, Tom, for the actuary, and moved that down to what we think is more realistic. The council made that change from 7% to 6.75% as a return. So these pages will show estimates for revenues and expenditures for both the fire and police pension funds. The second one, or excuse me, third one, I guess, would be the Gloss Mausoleum Fund. That is a mausoleum that is in Gloss Park. We are trusted with the care of that. Park District maintains the actual park, and from what I understand, is going to expand the park with the property purchase once they demolish the building. We will work with the Park District for any improvements there. And then the last is the working cash fund, which I think everybody understands. It's kind of like the emergency checkbook, try to keep $1 million in there, which we are fully funded. Happy to answer any questions, Mayor, and otherwise, that's all we're going to present tonight.
Great. Any questions? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. Both on the firefighters and the police pension fund, as it relates to income, line 24-00 on both. So that would be page 275 and 278. We all know that the stock market and bond market are doing pretty well this year, so I assume that the huge increase in the line item budget versus estimated is the estimation of how we're going to end the year. I'm surprised that you would put such a sunny estimation in that line.
Year's not over, Tom.
I understand. So again, disclaimer, that's based on current activity. We all know what happened at the end of last year, in December, the last two weeks, so who knows? But this is based on current returns.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, City Manager. I don't know if these details are hammered out yet. And I've talked to DMMC a little bit about the proposed bill that, I think it's in the Senate right now. I think there's a phase in over a couple of years for that, as I understand it. Was it a year or two? If it passes, if the pension consolidation passes, was it a year or something like that? I can't remember. Do we have any, I mean, I know it's up in the air, do we have any information on that?
I apologize, I don't, not as familiar with the bill, but we can get those details and bring them back to the council.
I would like to know, because that's going to actually, we'll know at the end of this veto session if that moves forward or not, so. Okay. Additional questions? Alderman Palomski.
I have a question. It might not be for tonight, but I'm coming up with it because this is like for interest-bearing funds, and I see that, you know, we're talking about fire. Where is the revenue for the foreign fire tax? And then also, I guess the, I know the mausoleum fund is unique, where is the, I guess, something similar where it's an interest-bearing account to maintain the memorial, the veteran's memorial And if you don't have it now, that's fine, you can.
On page 90, the general fund revenues, that's where you'll find the foreign fire insurance revenue that we collect on an annual basis.
Is that from Illinois Municipal League?
Correct. We just received that check about a week ago or so, and then the expenditures for that are in the fire department.
All right. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Eight minutes early, City Manager. Anything you want to add before I ask for a motion to adjourn? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Palomner, second by Alderman Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Mm-mm. Adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Jim, and everybody for sticking around.